With the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four members that need to take their oath of office, and we have a new member, Ms. Riley Small, and she'll do that now. Sure, whatever you want to do.
Each in order or all at once, Mr. Chairman?
I was gonna do it. I guess we can all do it.
Yeah.
Let's all do it at one shot. Ms. Riley Small, Mr. John Crocker, Mr. Richard Tiedemann, and myself.
If you'd all please stand. I'll ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Riley Small.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the municipality of Mentor.
Of the municipality of Mentor.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a Mentor Planning Commission member.
Of a Mentor Planning Commission member.
Term ending December 31st.
Term ending December 31st.
2025.
2025.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all official.
Thanks.
The last meeting we had got cut off at the end, but I'd be remiss if I didn't just take a moment to thank Rick Cicero. He spent four years on the commission, and there was a lot of late nights and a lot of work. So I just want to thank Rick and for his time that he did on the planning commission. And with that, Joe, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Crocker.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Ms. Small.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
This is also the start of our new cycle, and we have to have an organizational portion of this meeting. And with that, I'll take any nominations for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Cook for chairman.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Joe, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Ms. Perkovic.
Yes.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. I'll entertain for the co-chairman position.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Varga.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. And I'll entertain a nomination for secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I will nominate Mr. Crocker.
A second.
Is there any other nominations?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Mr. Perkovic. Is there any other nominations? Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on December 9th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Ms. Small.
Abstain.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have one public hearing, and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak against this will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a vehicle service and repair facility at 8470 Tyler Boulevard. I see that applicant is here. Will you give us your name and address? And tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Kurt Hanson, Classic Auto Group, 8470 Tyler Boulevard in Mentor. We are proposing to build a new reconditioning center for the Classic Auto Group facility, the main campus there, behind the existing Classic Cadillac building. Currently, today, the recon center is just to the front portion of the Cadillac building, in basically the front portion of Art's Warehouse. We have another project that's been coming that we're going to be using in relation to the three artists. We need to build a new reconditioning center. The reconditioning center is primary use for the classic organization only. It is not for any outside people to come to. It's the cars that they detail and repair are strictly vehicles that are on the inventory of the classic campus.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody wishing to oppose this? This public hearing is closed, and it is 7:06. Kathy, is there anything from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, we have six conditions that we've recommended to the board, and I guess I'd just also like to ask the applicant to confirm that there is now no outside work that is performed on any of the vehicles.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll move into new business since you're the next one up. Preliminary site plan of a vehicle servicing and repair facility at 8470 Tyler Boulevard. I'm sorry?
Does the commission desire to take the vote on the CUP?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify, and I apologize. It wasn't specified on the actual staff report. Those conditions, I would defer to the preliminary site plan, not to the CUP itself. We have no conditions for the CUP.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the CUP.
So moved. Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
We got a little ahead of ourselves. A preliminary site plan of a vehicle servicing and repair facility at 8470 Tyler Boulevard. Please tell us a little bit more.
(laughing). That was mostly the whole.
You've read the staff report and agree with the conditions?
Yes, we do.
All right, Kathy?
No other conditions.
Anything from the commission members?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Condition number four talks about rooftop units. You do have elevations. You don't show any rooftop equipment. Can you just inform us as to how you're going to deal with mechanical equipment?
Yeah, well, once we get into it, I think the design, there obviously will be a rooftop kind of over the office break room area. So we'll make sure that that is screened. Other than that, the other stuff will basically be exhaust fans. There is a paint booth at the far east end of the building, so it'll be the exhaust for the paint booth and stuff like that. So we'll work on making sure that that is all screened from Tyler Boulevard. I know a lot of the buildings is blocked behind the Cadillac building, so, but we'll make sure if they're being screened from Tyler Boulevard that that all is properly screened.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with six conditions.
Second.
Joe, please call the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker. Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank for your continued investment in the city, too. Miscellaneous review to allow a 780-square-foot carport at 8121 Deepwood Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Could you please give us your name and address? And tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
I'm Jay McDonald. I'm the Director of Operations for Lake County Board of Developmental Disabilities. We're looking to put a carport right in between the two buildings you see right here. That's my maintenance facility and my maintenance storage barn. Carport roof would match. Well, the barn on the right's getting painted this year, but it would match the roof on the new one. The heavily wooded area, excuse me, heavily wooded area in the back of this, it doesn't, this won't extend beyond either one of our existing buildings there. And this is on a, you can see there, it's on a private road on our own campus, which is nearly 70 acres. And if they don't work in our maintenance or transportation, you know, 85% of our own employees would never even see this facility. One of the conditions I saw on this, or recommendations, he said, or considerations, would be to put sides or a back on it. One of the things I got back, let me pull it out here, as a consideration on the staff report, given its close proximity to eastern property, then consideration should be given to adding walls to the structure, three sides for better screening. This, the eastern property line is, that's a nine-acre lot that the house is actually on Garfield. You see that nine-acre lot right there? That heavily wooded area where that arrow is, even now with no foliage there standing where this carport's going to go, you can't see houses back through those trees with no foliage. When there is foliage, you absolutely can't see anything. So whether there's sides on it, the reason I opted not to put sides on it is because of all the concrete there. We push snow right through the back of it, and that's what I wanted to be able to do, is be able to continue pushing snow through the back. Because we park, I park stuff there already right now, tractors, trailers, stuff like that. I just wanted to be able to cover them and park them there as well. And it's a little bit bigger than the 500 and whatever square foot that limitations that they put on it, so.
All right. Thank you. Kathy, anything from administration?
We received a question with regard to the appropriate distance that the carport should be from the two adjacent buildings. I did speak with our chief building official about that, and he did want to clarify that it would be appropriate. And it, we didn't have a site plan to do a true measurement, so that was one of the issues. But that he would recommend that there be a minimum five feet between each, from each building, each sidewall.
Okay.
And then as far as the, we didn't make it a condition, or we didn't recommend it to be a condition. The building official had provided a notice to Mr. McDonald back in November indicating that this building should be under your authority for architectural review. And obviously, then due to the size of the building is why it's in front of you, based on the Section 116501, and the fact that this is a residential district, so.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
What color is the fabric top of this?
The top, it's actually metal, and the top, it's kind of red, similar to the color of the barn.
Red?
It's a.
Oh, that's actually a metal top?
Yeah, it's metal.
It's not a fabric, okay.
No, it's metal.
Metal, that's right. But it's, the color is red?
Yes.
Based on the, the, one of the other images we saw that showed what this looked like, can you get something a little less bright, maybe, like just tan or brown or something? Not white, maybe not red? Red sounds a little bright.
Good, good. We got it to match the, we ordered it to match the barn colors is why.
Okay, so you're saying you're painting it, that's not the color the barn is now, or it's going to be?
No, the barn is going to be that color.
So the barn is also going to be red?
Yes.
Reddish?
Yes.
All right. I don't know. I'm looking at the roof that's immediately adjacent to it, and that's what you're going to see. Can you maybe just get it a gray color or something?
That roof is, not the roof that's on it anymore. That roof was replaced this last year. That's an old.
Okay, so what color is that roof?
It's got new, it's got new architectural shingles on it. It's a little darker. But the siding is the red.
I'm just, I'm just probing here, just trying to think about it, because, you know, I didn't want it to be white. I didn't, I mean, something that you would telegraph through the woods, even that, you know, that something would stand out. Anyway, I'm open for other opinions about it. I don't know. When you say red, is, do we have a sample of the red at all? Can we see what it looks like? No? Yes?
He provided it in the packet, but not an actual hard, hard sample, just a, just a.
Red metal.
It's not that I have a.
Can't see it through the woods.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. Except, you know, somebody could come in and put houses there next year, and then it's a different story, that's all.
How far? Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's all, that's all, thank you.
How far is the back of this to the property line? Because that property fronts Garfield, right?
So that, so this, this shows, that shows where the property line is to the, to the existing barn. That, that big open lot there, there you can see the property line. The slab for the carport doesn't go beyond either one, wouldn't, wouldn't go beyond either one of those existing buildings, so it would be in four of those. But that, that nine-acre lot right there that you see, the big one, affronts Garfield. The house that's on that is on Garfield.
Right, right. We know that house.
And I understand, I mean, you put your loader in here, is what you're doing, right? Yeah, you park your loader in here.
Yeah, it's a maintenance.
And you push the snow through it.
Yeah.
I saw it, yeah. So you almost can't have a back, because if, then.
They've parked stuff there for 30 years.
And you can't push your snow through with your loader.
Yeah.
If there's a back there. So I guess what I'm trying to get around is the screening that's along that property line, because in the not-too-distance future, this parcel's probably going to get developed. And I don't want to be, have a problem at that point, so we kind of got to look forward with this problem, so.
Well, there's already going to be a big, ugly red barn there. And this is going to look a lot nicer than that. (laughing).
So we've got to maintain that tree line or something, or.
Yeah.
I mean, Kathy, do you have a recommendation possibly? I mean, after he's explained about what he's doing there, I mean.
This is going to be the nicest-looking building there.
Certainly, I mean, Larry just did a rough measurement from the back of the barn. I don't know if any of you saw that, but it was about 26 feet. So you figure add maybe another 10 feet to that. You know, I guess the advantage is, is if that's there first, then it's up to them to do the screening if they put something over there. You could take that position. It's, there's no required screening between, from residential to, you know, residential zones. It's just a matter of, obviously, courtesy and being considerate of what's there. So that's why we had suggested the walls, but if it doesn't serve their purpose, then it's, it's probably a moot point.
Right now, there's a huge wall of snow right there.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a clarification? What's the setback requirement in R4?
Kathy?
Well, for a primary structure, it's 50, 50 feet. Yeah, 20 for an accessory building.
And that's approximately 26 feet off?
Well, the current building that's, you know, right there, that's about 26 feet, and it'll be more than that, so.
Well, within that.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, don't touch the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's, there's, there's, if you draw a line from building to building, it stays within.
I got you.
Anyways, it is.
It's a carport for your loader.
Yeah. It's a carport to put a, that truck you see in that picture and, and a new salt truck that I bought last year that I don't want to put in my salt barn, because the last one corroded. Looks like a pile of junk.
Are you putting a concrete pad down, too?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with no conditions.
Second.
Is there, there's one condition, correct?
What's the one condition?
Five-foot separation from both sides.
Oh, 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 okay, right, I'm sorry. That's, yeah. I was looking at, what was that?
Either building.
From either building, yes.
So Joe, it's, I'll go ahead.
Motion to approve with one condition.
Condition is specifically?
Being that the new structure is at least five foot from either existing building.
Joe, please call the roll.
All right. Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Ms. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Preliminary site plan of a storage facility at 7868 Reynolds Road. Is that applicant here? Please give your name and address.
My name is Daniel Ginberg, 5607 Glenridge Drive.
Ralph DeBrugan, the Mannick and Smith Group, 2600 Chagrin Falls, Boulevard Suite 500, Chaker Heights, Ohio 44122.
Thanks. Tell us a little bit about it, won't you? This is a, this is a whole new, this is a different plan from the first go-around, right?
Absolutely.
So we're making a whole other run at it.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm happy to give a.
Tell us what's different.
Yeah, I'm happy to give a quick background on us, or I can just jump straight into the site plan.
We'll just jump right into the site.
Okay, great. Yeah, so we're actually very excited about this new site plan. We left last, or the November meeting, taking the comments and remarks from this planning commission, and I'm excited to accommodate as much as we could. The obvious change is the consolidation of the five buildings into one singular building. This allows us to get construction efficiencies. We lower our materials, we reduce the amount of paving. Our operations team is excited because they get to manage less area, so when they take customers on tours, there's just, it's quicker, more efficient. When they, our managers do their walkthroughs to inspect the property, make sure everything's in order, that's more efficient, that's quicker. We're also able to preserve the ground-level loading. That's very critical for this type of project in this market. And I'm personally excited, as the developer, to reduce the amount of disturbed area on the site. We've more than doubled our open space and previous, our previous surface is approximately three and a half acres on the site now. It was closer to 75,000 square feet, so more than doubled. And so there is a lot to be excited about. The comments and remarks from the planning commission in November, there were concerns about dead ends. We've eliminated that, as you can see, full circulation around the site. We've added a five-foot landscape strip on the front of the building, fronting Reynolds Road, which softens the building and will look very nice. So that was, that was great feedback, and we're happy to incorporate. We've also reduced the amount of outdoor storage on the, on this, on the site. We have kept the same number of parking spaces, but we eliminated the outdoor storage units. So no more roll-up doors or drive-up units on the site. It's all accessed via the one building, and it's all internal. I read through the staff report. The proposed conditions that were in here really are all aligned with us. I would say there are, there are two that just want to get some clarity and understanding. The first being the second sentence in the, in Condition 10, regarding additional landscape screening along the northern and western property line. So on the northern side, where our parking is, we are showing an eight-foot vinyl opaque privacy fence. And just beyond that is a undisturbed buffer to the parking lot of the Quaker State. So in our, in our opinion, we think that is ample screening to, to that property to our north. And on the west, on the west side, that requirement, I, next to the industrial park, I'm just, I want to know what we're trying to accomplish there, as we don't have any outdoor storage to screen. So I just want to make sure I understand what the goal is there. The other condition is relating to the road to the First Energy property to be provided and maintained. Our title commitment is conflicting with the staff report, where it mentions an easement has been identified. Our title commitment does not have any easement that benefits the utility company to access their site onto our property. They do, however, have the right to come onto our site and do tree maintenance as it relates to the power lines. And I would just like to point out that the utility company has access to the road, or to their property, I'm sorry. They have access to their property via Industrial Park Boulevard, which is a legitimate road. So I just, I just want to understand what the goal is in giving them access over our site when they already have that. So thank you again for your time tonight, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Kathy, could you touch on?
Certainly. So with regard to the, the screening that we recommended, I guess I want to point to a couple of, a couple of things. The minimum wall or solid fencing requirement around any outdoor storage area is a minimum of eight feet. And knowing what the proposed use of that area is, I would estimate then that the RVs and/or boats will exceed a height of eight feet. So if the commission didn't feel it necessary to increase the height of the wall, the screening is going to provide, obviously, an additional vertical buffer. And we were talking about, obviously, a more substantial vertical screening, like some Evergreens, that would, again, support the means of a buffer. The other concern is, and in his comment with regard to the western property line, this, the, the wall, the wall requirement or the fencing requirement is supposed to encompass the entire area. And as you can see from the drawing, the fence stops short right there. And so you'll still have a view with the detention basin there. You're still going to have a view of that outdoor storage area. There was a couple of concerns that we mentioned in the staff report with regard to just overall security of the site. In a lot of these facilities that we have seen, the, the entire site is fenced in. In this case, it is not. There are two security gates at each entrance, which is fine, but there's nothing to say that somebody couldn't go right around that security gate and then access the site. So there's not a true, a complete enclosure of that outdoor area. And so that was one of the reasons why we recommended the additional screening, recognizing, again, you know, it is a unique site. And maybe they can speak to why they are comfortable with not having the entire site fenced. I'm not saying that that should be a requirement, but there isn't a true return that goes to the building, then that completely conceals the outdoor storage area. So something needs to be remedied in that, within, within that regard to meet the, the code requirement. As far as the utility easement, that was an original comment that the engineering department had made, and we carried it through into this particular report. As long as you are comfortable with the agreement that you have with First Energy, we're fine. But it was something that our, our city engineer had brought up as wanting to make sure that that easement was maintained and access was available. So it was, again, if we want to modify that condition, certainly, that's fine. But it was just a matter of pointing that out again.
All right. Thank you. I guess, just a couple of things that I have real quick is that the first plan that we saw, whatever, months ago, on the west property line, there was a six-foot fence. And then, because it was an industrial property, we thought, you know, maybe an eight-foot fence would be okay. And you guys had talked about some louvers and whatnot. Now, this is, this is a whole new plan.
Right.
And now, you have your outside storage facing a restaurant. So, I know that we had made a concession on an eight-foot fence on the west line before. But now, you're on a whole different property line.
Sure.
So, I don't know if it's right to Quaker State, if they, if their customers are looking at the tops of RVs and boats and whatnot. So, I would be more comfortable with raising that up to, to, to meet our requirements.
Sure. And, and we are, I think we are meeting that requirement, so we're proposing an eight-foot, completely opaque vinyl-
I get it, but are you guaranteeing nothing's going to be stored there? That's over eight foot tall?
No, no. I mean, a boat or RV on a trail will be over eight feet.
Right, it's going to be sticking up. So people over at, at Quaker State.
Sure, sure.
Which is different than the industrial property to the west property. You get where I'm saying here?
Absolutely. I, I understand. I was, I was at the site today, because I figured, you know, that would be a, you know, based on reading the staff report, that additional screening might be required. In my opinion, you know, the restaurant itself is up on the road. The patio for the restaurant is actually north-facing. So, we're really just fronting their parking lot in the back. But if, if it's the planning commission's request, I'm happy to take a look at additional planting. But my, you know, my opinion is-
Right, right.
There's ample screening with the fence and with that undisturbed buffer just past it. But happy to take a look.
For me, I want to not be able to see the tops of the, even if I'm trying to look at them.
Sure. Understand. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
This is Kathy. I remember in other situations where we were putting up fences and things around outdoor storage areas. I could, the one that comes to mind is that electrical supply company on Manor Avenue, where the electric lines go over the top. And I remember that we were dealing with the situation that where we stated that we wanted the, the fence to be six inches above anything they were going to store there, right? I kind of, is that, is that a requirement for, for fencing off outdoor storage? Because I remember that being part of the discussion.
Well, this is, because of the new provision, which is under 116104H, it specifically says, "The inventory shall be stored at a height no higher than one foot below the height of the perimeter fence." So, I mean, there is that requirement. The eight-foot is, is just a minimum. So you can establish a higher fence height, and based, again, on, on the inventory.
So we could accept a situation where we would state that, yes, we want an eight-foot fence, and we want a series of landscaping plantings that would be above the eight-foot to cover the full height of the equipment stored?
Then you wouldn't be in compliance with the requirement that the inventory has to be one foot lower.
No, I understand. I mean, I don't, I'm just trying to see where the wiggle room is here, because right now, the tops of those units are what, 12 feet high?
I don't, the, the RVs, I'm not quite sure how tall they are.
I mean, I would guess the big ones are at least 12 foot.
I would think so, yes.
Right. So, that would suggest we'd have to require a fence that was 12-foot high to meet the, the code requirement.
Well-
If not taller, or a foot above. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to work with-
The code is, it's got to be one foot.
Higher than the thing that you're storing, and I'm just guessing it's 12.
Is that, is that the fence, or is that the screening?
Well, the screening, but right, I don't know how you screen that so you can't see it without a fence. I mean-
Well, we, we could put, we could potentially landscape it with evergreens that would be year-round.
Right. And I'm, I'm just trying to find where the room is between what's required and what, what's reasonable to do.
Kathy, you have the code open now. Can you just read, read the requirement?
Okay, so, so, under item, under item 116104H1B, "The outdoor storage area shall be enclosed on all sides, not bounded by a building wall. The enclosure shall be a masonry material that matches the design and materials of the main building, or a solid fence or other appropriate solid material that is maintenance-free and compatible with the existing building at a minimum height of eight feet, or is otherwise approved by the planning commission. Outdoor storage should be an improved surface and shall be secured by a gate. The inventory stored shall be at a height no higher than one foot below the height of the fence, or, or wall, you know." And I think, you know, in the examples that we were referencing when we had developed the regulations, we were looking at, to give you the best example, some of the big boxes in the city. They actually have some pretty high walls that enclose their storage areas. They go considerably higher, I would say. Would it be even higher than 12 feet? Yeah. So, it does happen. Actually, there's another facility, I don't know the height of it offhand, but they do a really nice job, so I can say their name, ACO on Pine Cone. They do an excellent job of their screening. They have a pretty high wall, which is one of the, one of the examples that we modeled the code after. I mean, I, you know, maybe Mr. Zeman wants to weigh in, but I think there is a little bit of wiggle room with regard to the height of the proposed wall. But I think it is kind of clear what needs to be accomplished with that screen wall.
Mr. Zeman, weigh in?
As far as what wiggle room they have.
Yeah, I don't necessarily want to propose an ultimate solution. It, it sounds like, you know, this being preliminary, there's an opportunity to, to come back and see some alternate, alternate designs. You know, if it's some very tall arborvitae at, at full maturity. Again, I don't, I don't know exactly whether or not that accomplishes the purpose and intent of the code, and, or whether or not you want a 20-foot tall solid, you know, fence over there, or whatever, but-
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Not to interrupt, am I interrupting? No, okay. I was just looking at this and wondering, and this is just for the sake of discussion. The issue is, to some degree, that you're storing these very large vehicles immediately next to a commercial restaurant on the north side. Could you store those same units on the south side of the driveway? On the south side of the building, where you've already lowered the grade, and the only adjacent property is a, is a utility right away?
Well, the, the grade is higher on the south side, and we also were trying our best not to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Touch the tree preservation down there.
Am I reading this wrong? I'm sorry. So the grade is higher on the south side and lower on the north side?
That's correct.
So the two-story side is on the-
That's right.
Okay, now I, okay. So that doesn't help. So just scratch that.
Just a clarification question. At least our interpretation of outdoor storage is usually, you know, materials, you know, tires, gravel, something that's usually unsightly. These are high-end recreational vehicles, or boats, or, you know, just cars too, that will obviously be screened. And it would be our opinion that an eight-foot fence with evergreens would look nicer than a 13-foot fence. You know, that kind of feels almost a prison, you know, so that, that would be our, our request.
So you just brought up an interesting point, just, again, for discussion purposes, that if you had boats there, those would be the big plastic, plastic wrapped boats with the big, the dark blue, bright blue plastic that covers them?
If, if they are, that, that's something the, the owner of the boat would do.
No, I understand, but that could be what's parked in one of those-
Sure. And, and these are, there are only 14 spaces here, and we're very picky. So, you know, these aren't going to be unsightly vehicles. We have, in our leases, we have, they have to maintain a certain standard. So, you know, it's very important that our customers, that this, this feels nice and safe and welcoming. So, all, all the, you know, if it's unsightly, or, or there's an issue, we send a notice, and if they don't fix it, then we actually have it towed, so.
It's fine. I'm just, again, I'm not sure. I'd like to see, from off, off-site, a bunch of bright blue-
Sure.
You know, plastic wrapped boats, half of which is over, I can see over the top of the fence, because they're sitting on trailers, you know. I, I'm just trying to, you know, because I hadn't even thought of the boats. I've been thinking of RVs and things like that, that are kind of, you know, finished-looking. But if there's a boat with plastic wrap on it, blue, I start to feel a little differently, like maybe we do want to screen this to the full extent that we can screen it. Just my opinion.
I mean, I think you're going to see the art. I mean, you're, you can only trailer so long of a boat, right? I mean, you can't trailer a 40, 50-foot boat, so you're only going to get those, you know, I don't know, up to a 26-foot boat anyway. So I don't really know how tall those sit, and I don't know if eight feet's enough, but I think we've had enough of discussion on it where you can-
Yeah. We'll, we'll come back. We'll come up with some ideas for sure. Yep, yep, absolutely.
And you've got your marching orders, and is there anything else from the commission members?
And it's, I say this on every project, and we all know what I'm going to say. There is an item about the screening mechanical equipment-
Yes.
On the roof. It's not shown on the preliminary plan. I'm just hoping you understand it has to be screened, and we-
Absolutely. And we remember those, we remember those comments from, from before, and they will be screened.
And the building is sprinkled, right?
Correct.
Okay, because otherwise you'd have an exit problem.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
I just, sorry, on the, on the easement for the utility company, I just don't know where we left off with that, and I'm just nervous that we're agreeing to an easement that I don't know the details of, that could potentially put us in a violation of a zoning condition. So, I just didn't know if we could circle back to that.
Okay. Kathy, condition number seven.
Just, you could just, would the city feel comfortable eliminating condition number seven?
Can't really mandate they provide a legal interest to, to someone that doesn't already have it. And I think that's probably a point of confusion. I think there was a, some concern that the approval may potentially violate current easement. If that easement doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, so.
We're, we're happy to provide our title commitment that would show that, or our ALTA survey that shows that very thing as a condition.
Ms. Mitchell?
I, I guess I would agree, you know, provide the, the, well, a survey's required anyway with the final.
Okay.
So we'll see that. So if you want to eliminate seven, for now, we can always add it back in or something.
And it may show back up.
Okay, that's totally fine. And, and the screening on the, the west side, as part of the second, part of condition 10, we were only focusing on the north side there.
It's screening a year. Western property will provide a year-round vertical screening sufficient to exceed the height of the proposed fence. Kathy, will you expand on that? Condition number 10.
Well, I think to the point we, we were just talking about, I mean, at the, at the final, if you want to modify that in any way, it certainly can be. I mean, so I, I still think that there's going to be a need for some level of screening of the western line in, in order to properly meet the code. So, you know, that can be modified at the, at the final with an updated condition.
Okay.
That, the fence relate, being discussed in item 10 is the same fence we're talking about. We're just talking about the end portion of that fence, correct? We're not talking about a fence across the entire back of the property.
Correct.
We're talking about screening the fence and the, and the storage area, the same storage area we were talking about, from the western end.
So number six addresses appropriately the storage area, but 10 addresses the fact that we want to see some additional screening.
Of that same area.
Of, of that area.
Not the whole back.
Okay, okay, understood.
That's the clarification. It's the same, it's to screen the existing, the new proposed storage area-
Understood.
From the western view. That it's not just to be screened from the north, it's to be screened from the west.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And you're comfortable without putting a fence all the way around this?
Yes, yes. We, we own and operate more than 50 storage facilities, and it's not uncommon for us to have a gate and take the fence back a certain length, just, you know, like a subdivision. It's a deterrent. We have, security is paramount, so we have, each customer has their own access code to get in, so we know who's coming and going. We have security cameras at all the entrance points, so it, it's not needed to take the fence all the way around the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tiedemann?
With that question that you just asked, then we need to address item number six, because we do have on there that it shall encompass all, and the fence basically dead ends, or, yeah, it just stops. So, what are we going to do with that condition?
I believe that's what the applicant's going to address at the next-
Okay, so that's going to be part of the next, all the fence issue.
The fence, the screening.
We're basically saying, meet, meet the requirements of 116104H in, in that statement.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
If that'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve with 10 proposed conditions, eliminating number seven.
Second.
Joe, please call Earl. Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you soon. Preliminary site plan of an industrial building at 6028 Pine Cone Drive is that applicant here. And please state your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
My name is Brian Garrity. Address is 36933 Vine Street in Willoughby.
Cowling cuts with G and squared of the proposed property.
Thank you. So, summary of the project. G and T recently closed on the parcel that we're discussing tonight. They've outgrown their operations right across the street, just to the south. So they're looking to move out of that facility into a much larger facility. They're going from, I think, about 12,000 square feet to about 38,000 square feet to increase production and to make their operations more efficient. So, we've already reviewed the comments. Well, just, I'll back up to the project. So basically, the concept is, we got one entrance drive, one curb cut coming in off the street. We split the parking lot into two, one for, you know, employees and visitors, and overflow parking if required for other employees. There's an office at the, about a 4,200-square-foot office, a little bit shorter than the rest of the building at the front. Behind that is the shop, where all the machinery will take place. And then above the shop to the north is sort of their storage and staging area for all their materials. And the area off the back is dedicated for future expansion down the road. If, if, there's about 24,000 to 25,000 square feet of expansion that we've identified. We did review all the comments, and we've taken in, you know, we've already started to take them into account. First and foremost, the truck turnaround is obviously a big deal, so we've, you know, we're already looking at strategies. I do have a sketch, if anybody wants to see it, you know, what we're thinking. We're probably going to take the office piece, slide it down to the south.
You have a sketch?
Yes.
You put it on the table there, they'll- Okay. Oh, we have new, new tools. Oh, look at this.
Hi, tech.
I like it.
Except we're looking at-
Except he's showing us that over there.
There we go. It's got a glitch.
So, this, this was thrown together pretty quickly just yesterday. So the idea is, is that light, the light green, kind of lime green part is the office piece. We slid that to the south. Took the parking lot, we rotated it 90 degrees and consolidated it. Looks like we can fit all 38 required spaces in the footprint right up above the office. To the east of that, to the right of the parking lot, would become the truck turnaround area. We'll finesse that as we need to when we do our truck turn studies, when we come back to you guys for final approval. We pushed the loading dock back, you know, to open up the truck turning area. Overall, the other, otherwise building footprint hasn't changed. We still have the same square footage, expansion in the back. The entrance drive shifted to the north to allow for, for better circulation. So that's the direction we're heading. Like I said, you know, we'll, we'll have this cleaned up in, you know, in, in a format similar to what we presented for this, this meeting, as well as all the other requested documents, you know, the landscape plans, photometrics, you know, everything else that you guys were looking for.
Thank you. Anything from administration?
Well, I believe our question was answered with regard to the back, and that is a potential expansion. So that may, that may impact how the, the materials are proposed on the, on the rear of the building, which I believe the commission is generally considerate of with other projects. We've, we've put in detail what we're requiring with the landscape plan. So hopefully, if there's any concerns or questions with that, you know, they can certainly contact us. And it sounds like they're already kind of going in the right direction. The loading dock was a big, was a big issue for us, and it looks like they've already addressed that. So, I think the conditions speak for themselves otherwise.
Kathy, could you say a little bit about the brick-to-metal ratio?
So, the design guidelines for industrial corridors outlines recommended, recommended materials that I believe the commission is very consistent, in particular, in the, in the industrial park district, which is what this falls under. And, and basically, the code reads, "If painted metal panels are used in an industrial building, they should not be used in any office portion of the building and/or on the main facade facing the street. If used on sides and rear elevations, they should not occupy more than 50% of the wall, and should be located above a brick base." So that was one of the conditions that we noted, just to alert the applicant in item number three.
If I may, so just to make sure I understand based on your comments, so the front office area needs to be brick.
Yes.
And only brick. And the remaining perimeter of the building needs to be a 50-50 ratio?
Yes.
Well, we can be a little flexible on the expansion side of the building, and we've done that in the past. You know, if you're looking, if, you know, I see where that is, that's facing. But, I mean, at least that's where I stand. And you had talked about the expansion, and, you know, I don't think we need to go crazy on a side you're going to tear down. But I just, you know, just a word to the wise, you know, review the staff report, and we understand this is just a preliminary site plan, and these are just recommendations to, you know, we know this is a finished product, and you'll be back again.
The other two faces that face the street of the building there, so the other two faces that we would have face the street, do those have to be all brick as well, or can they be the 50-50?
Kathy?
We indicated in the condition a minimum of 50% masonry. I mean, it is set back. It's up to the board of how they feel about that.
I'm okay with a 50%, and then, you know, the office portion should be in the brick. And I don't want to speak for everyone. Anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
It's not a finished product. You've got to go back and look at this, moving the office around. But we're relatively serious about this with the brick finish or a decorative masonry material, however, whatever you decide. And not to use as a complete example, but just as a reference point, these two-story storage buildings that we just saw is brick from grade to rooftop. So we already talked to them once, and so that's the kind of product we're getting. And so that's what we expect.
And you're in that corridor. You see what's around there.
Yeah, and we're trying to hold everyone to the same standard.
I mean, your existing building is there.
No, it's our intention to comply.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another question, though, it's also referenced in the staff report. You have a very slight sloping roof, metal roof on this. How are you handling your mechanical equipment? I mean, do you have a theory? Is it rooftop units?
There will be rooftop units with screen.
So then you understand they need to be screened. That's all, just to bring it up again for that point. Okay.
Question on number six. We do have a steel turnings hopper that will be stored outside, and based on the recommendation given to everybody else prior to us, masonry. We are across from ACO, so that's what the building looks like. So, I mean, it's fantastic how they blocked all that off. I mean, it looks like a Ford.
Right.
They did a great job there. So we were looking at kind of doing the same, not a mechanical gate, more of a manual gate for us, put in front of that to hide the steel turnings.
Speak more into the mic, yeah.
We were going to hide the steel turnings, and behind that is like a three-sided facade with a manual gate on the front of it, so we could open it up to get into it. And a steel turnings hopper is basically 20 feet by about 12 to 14 feet high. I'll get clarification on the actual height before we final.
Okay.
So having heard our previous comment about outdoor storage, you understand what we're expecting.
Yep.
Great. All right, well, that's great. Anything more? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the seven conditions.
Second. Joe, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for your continued investment. Is there anything? Kathy?
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can we hold on to that?
Motion to adjourn?